Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting on Wednesday, February 3rd, 2016. Can I have the roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
President.
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Daniel Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Okay, will you please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion to accept the minutes of January 20th?
Second.
A motion to second to approve the minutes of January 20th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Any abstentions? Okay. Public speaking time. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for any topic other than what's in the public hearings, please come to the podium, state your name and topic. Okay, not seeing anyone. Communications from elected officials, boards, and committee, as I said last time, we give any precinct or at-large councils a chance to update the city on any new topics in their area. Anyone? Counselor Hayes?
Yep. Tomorrow evening, the Conway School of Landscape Design will be holding a community workshop at 6:00 PM in this room that is for the Park Hill Trails Plan that they're working with the city planner on.
Okay.
So that's at 6 o'clock tomorrow.
Okay, any other reports? Okay, and we have no letter, written mail communications, or correspondence. Mayor Communications, Mayor Cager, any updates?
This is just a quick reminder that it's the 30th Annual Winter Fest, and that's on Saturday, February 13th, which is just a week from Saturday. And the event begins at 8:00 in the morning, and it ends at 6:00 at the bonfire. So just a little reminder.
Are you gonna promise us winter?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go on to standing committees, just for continuity here, and some people here to talk. We're gonna move finance.
I had a question for the mayor.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Mayor Cager, would you mind, there's a question for you. Counselor Hayes?
Can you update us on the city engineer, please?
Meaning?
Are we hiring? Have we hired? Where is that in the process?
It's in the interview process, and actually, it would be in person, it would be the HR Director that would be involved in the process.
Clearly, but just I was just wondering if we had hired somebody.
But what we've been doing is what we've been doing for quite a while. It's been advertised, it's posted, and we're accepting applications.
Where is it advertised and posted?
We advertise in the newspaper, actually. Again, Jane, I believe this one was advertised in the Republican, quite a few places. And all applications, all vacancies are posted on our website and on our bulletin board, you know, where every, all meeting agendas. Where else did we do this? You come on.
The engineer position has been advertised in the Gazette, the Republican, I've posted on all of the local colleges, I've posted it in Worcester Poly's engineering placement ads, we've placed it with Mass Water Works.
American Society of Engineers.
It's gone into like eight or nine different locations, not counting the schools.
And how long will you be posting the position? Have you got any good spots?
Until filled.
Until filled?
It's posted.
Right, MMA is the Beacon is the other one.
Great.
But it is posted until filled. We did not put a closing date on it.
Great.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that'll do.
Okay. So going on to standing committees, we're gonna do finance first tonight. Finance, Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked for that so that we could deal with some of the items that the Director of Public Work is here for. First, I wanted to let you know that the kennel donation account, we got some information at our last meeting. The mayor updated on where we were with legal issues on that, and we were very happy. That should be resolved soon. Next, in front of you is the proposed council budget. This is the budget that the clerk, Barbara La Bombard, prepared, and we debated it, eliminated a few items. The budget includes an increase in the clerk's salary, which was proposed last year but then reduced at the request of the mayor for level funding purposes. We once again are proposing that it be increased. She hasn't had an increase since 2007, I believe I was correct. Is that right? 2007. That would be the increase, if you read the line there, $100 a month, $220 a month, and from $65 to $75 a month. Overall budget is, what, $500 and some dollars, it looks like, maybe a little more. But that is what we propose to send to the mayor as our request from the City Council. If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Go ahead.
I move that we present to the mayor the requested FY '17 proposed budget for the City Council.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second for accepting the '17 City Council budget. Any questions or comments? Okay, nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Retirement Board stipend is up for public hearing. I would like to move to new business. We have a snow emergency declaration. Everybody's gonna wonder why we need a snow emergency since it hasn't snowed. As, very nicely written by, on the back of the document, you'll see Patricia Cotton has written us a letter telling us how the money has been spent in preparation for snow that may come and didn't come, but we, for anybody, just to remind everybody, we leave this budget fairly low because the state allows us to run deficit in this budget if we declare a snow emergency. If we do have a snowstorm, they won't have any ability to purchase new materials. And I'd like the Director of Public Works to come up and explain this, especially since we haven't had any snow, but I understand it completely, but the public may not.
Well, you're absolutely right, and as some of the veteran councils may know, that this is a budget that we set low to start with. And we know we can deficit spend it. So what happens is that when we get to the point where we can't, we can't purchase anything anymore, then we need the council's approval to go into what's called a snow emergency. Last year, we had a banner year as far as snow emergencies, maybe half a million dollars, and we ended up with the salt shed being pretty empty because we want to add to that. So as we were coming to the end of the year, we kinda made sure that we could make it through with what we had, so our salt shed was empty. So the first thing that we had to do this year is put salt back in the shed. We did have one plowable storm, but we did have a few sanding, quite a few sanding events. And on a night like tonight, we get rain, it's not supposed to get cold, but in the past, if it got cold, we'd have to go out and sand every single street because every single street would freeze up. So we did use some salt out of that shed, we had to fill it again. So we filled it again, and we're out of money. When we have a plowing event, we pay for the, to plow the schools, comes out of this budget also. So just for an example, to plow White Brook Middle School and the high school, that's $4,500 a storm. So that's quite an expense right there. So there's many things that go into this, not just the fact that there's no snow, if we also sand the school during, you know, sanding events. So we're out spending money, I shouldn't say spending money, but we're out putting material down if it freezes up, as well as if we get snow. So right now, our shed is full. If we, if the winter continues like this, we'll have a very low figure going into the snow emergency for next year, and the added bonus is, we're gonna have some salt in the shed, so we won't have to buy it next year.
Excuse me, am I also correct that the advantage of keeping the, you know, this budget low is that if you set it a certain amount, then the following year, you have to request that same amount or more? So by keeping it low, it gives us the flexibility for bad winters versus mild winters kind of thing, is what I'm like.
That's correct.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments, Director? No? Okay, Counselor Rist?
To remind our new members of the Finance Committee, what happens now is if we pass this this evening, purchase orders will be in our boxes, usually, starting with me, and two of us have to sign them. The council does not mean to approve purchases moving forward. Each purchase order is given to us so that we approve the items that are directly related to snow needs, like the purchase of salt, or plowing, or anything like that. I'm all set, Joe, if this...
Thank you very much.
So I'm gonna, this is an emergency item which can be passed, and one session does not have to go to committee. So I move pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, the Easthampton City Council, in conjunction with the approval of the mayor, hereby authorize the emergency expenditure of funds for the continued removal of ice and snow in the city of East Hampton during fiscal year 2016 and further, and a majority of the Finance Subcommittee be authorized to approve snow emergency warrants as necessary.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second to approval, to approve the snow emergency. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
So we'll all need to sign that. I have two items of new business I'd like to move as first readings. First is an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $6,500 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, to be transferred to the Fire Department Medical Expenses, $4,000, and the Fire Department Equipment, $2,500, for a total of $6,500. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for unforeseen medical expenses and to repair fire equipment due to mechanical failures. The second item is a supplemental appropriation request as a first reading. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $25,602.88 to be appropriated from Enterprise retained earnings, to be appropriated to Water Personnel Services, $19,102.88, and Sewer Personnel Services, $6,500. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for retirement payouts. I move that these two items be sent to Finance Committee for review.
Second.
A motion to second to move the previously read interdepartmental transfer and supplemental appropriation to finance. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
To conclude, our next meeting will be next Wednesday at 5:00 PM. End of morning, thank you.
That concludes. Yeah, public safety, I think we'll try to squeeze that in, Counselor Hayes?
Sure. We met last week, unfortunately, Counselor Derby was unable to attend, so we are going to try and meet again before the next meeting. I am hopeful that we'll be able to get the Paul Street acceptance public hearing for the March, first meeting in March for City Council. I don't know the date for that one. So I would like a 30-day extension on the Paul Street Extension, Street Acceptance, please.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second for 30-day extension for the Paul Street Extension. Any additional questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you. This concludes.
Okay, I think we can probably start appointments, Counselor Smith, maybe we can do one more there.
I have a pretty quick report, so I think I can do that. We didn't meet this week because we had no new appointments, but I have two Merrill appointments that were received that I would like to make a motion to move to the Appointment Subcommittee for review.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to move the appointments of Teresa Lorenko and Brian Dupree, the Ag of Cultural Commission Veterans Council. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, that concludes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we also have our next meeting at February 17th at 5:30.
Okay, great, thank you. So now I think I'll entertain a motion of open public hearings.
One more.
Second.
A motion to second, open public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the council for considering a public hearing, although it wasn't required, I would like the Retirement Board and other interested parties to be able to speak to this. Before us is acceptance of Mass General Laws, Chapter 32, 20, 6, and 20-4H. What it is, is a request by the Retirement Board to accept this chapter so that they may receive a stipend for their work from between $3,000 and $4,500. They requested this, if you read their initial letter, due to enhanced duties and responsibilities required by the law, including fiduciary oversight of the retirement system's investments, undergo annual mandatory education training, annual statements of financial interests, acknowledgements of compliance and conflict of interest to retirement laws. That was the reason for their request. Also, they recommended increasing the stipends for the auditor and the treasurer to remind the council, the auditor and treasurer currently receive $1,500 for their work with the Retirement Board. The increase, the total increase, there are five members, which would mean an increase of $15,000, is out of the operational expenses for the retirement system. This is the retirement system fund, it is not the general fund of the city of East Hampton. This money will be part of the funds, and I don't know how to call it, I guess it's developed over time, and how much the fund will be increased because of this is minor. Unfunded liability will be increased in a minor way, the cost to the city's yearly appropriation will be minor. So that was important. It is not a request from the general fund, a $15,000 request from the general fund would be a major, you know, request. This is the retirement system, which is a totally separate system. And I'll let the Finance Director or anyone else explain that better than I can. Currently, we appropriate $2,771,000 to the retirement system each year, which pays for the benefits of retirees. For your information, which we gained from, I'd like to thank Counselor Hagan who sent us this information, there are 102 boards, or retirement boards, in cities and towns in the state. Seventy-one of them have accepted this. Most are at the $3,000 level, some at $4,500, others in between that. For your information, we discovered that the auditor is a board member. She represents the state, I'm sorry, she represents the administration's appointment to the board, a financial member. As an ex-official member, she would also receive the $3,000 because she is a board member. The current stipend of $1,500, the debate on that would have been whether or not she would receive that in addition. There was some debate as to whether or not the legislative body, that being the council, could rescind that so that the auditor would only receive the $3,000. But it was discovered through the auditor, who did some good research, that it was the board itself that would have to rescind that. And we received documents this evening, which you found on your desk, and which the board voted to rescind that. There is a question as to whether the board should go to zero or 200 in that item, but also that the, our auditor expressed a desire not to take the stipend should they, should it not be, go to zero. What this means is, all members of the board will receive $3,000, the auditor would not receive more than that. Now, in a separate motion, the treasurer, which is our Finance Director, treasurer of the retirement system, currently receives $1,500, as a recommendation of the board, would also have an increase to $3,000. That is an action that we must take, which is why there's a separate motion for that. So the motion regarding the auditor is not in, is not something we need to do because it was discovered that that's for the retirement system to decide. So we will be moving this evening, number one, to recommend a stipend for the board members, and number two, to recommend an increase to the stipend for the treasurer. If you have questions, I'd ask you to ask the Finance Director or other members of the Retirement Board, because they're much more versed on this than I am.
Is there a form, anyone from the city or the Retirement Board who would like to address this at all?
Very quickly, maybe, and answer any questions that you might have. To make it as quick as I can, I would say that we've been, the board has been having a great deal of difficulty...
I'm sorry, just for the record, can I have your name and position, please?
I'm sorry, yes. My name is James Dunham, address Seven Overlook Drive in East Hampton. And I started to say, we've been having a great deal of trouble keeping board members because of the increasing responsibilities that the board has had. As Counselor Rist mentioned, we have to accrue 18 hours of continuing education now every three years. We can get no less than three credits per year, no more than nine credits per year, but they have to, in the aggregate, be at least 18 within those three years. We also have to fill out now financial disclosure forms that are quite lengthy and don't only involve us, but our immediate families, fathers, mothers, sons, daughters, sisters, brothers. And it's very time-consuming. We also have to travel for these educational seminars, and we have two conferences a year, one usually in early June and one in September. Each of those is four to five days long, depending on what they're putting on. And so that's time away from our family, or our jobs, or what do we have, which is one of the reasons that some of the fifth members of our board have been chasing, changing, I'm sorry. We had a financial advisor as one of the people on our board, but he owns his own business, and he just couldn't make the con ed classes, and if you don't make the credits, the state removes you from the board. We had another fellow that used to own his own insurance agency as a fifth member. The time restraints were just too much, you know, he couldn't do it. And all of this boils down to the fact that you're expected to try to do all of this to the best of your ability, and there's zero compensation for anybody. And as Counselor Rist mentioned, seven to one of the 102 boards already have this compensation. And so I would say, in general, that's the reason that we're asking for this. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Wayne?
How many times do you meet in a month, or whatever?
Well, okay, we always, by law, we have to meet once a month, so we always do that. Then we usually meet, as of recent, another time or two a month, working on different things, policy programs, things of that nature. And then we have to, if anything comes up with retirement issues, somebody's going out, saying a disability retirement or something, we have to meet, we usually go over all of the medical panel reviews, which we have to do from three separate doctors, read them through completely. So it varies on how many people are retiring in a month, and what else is going on within the retirement system.
So my second question is, when you attended your classes, did the city not reimburse you for mileage?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, so going forward, if you get the stipend, is the city still going to reimburse you for mileage?
Absolutely.
And so forth?
Absolutely, absolutely. Paying us to get to where we have to go and back in the mileage thing is part of the statute. Says that we, in the laws, it says that you are entitled to be reimbursed for any expenses down there. Now, if we go somewhere for four days, they also pay for our meals and our room. But it's still, we're in class probably from 8:30 in the morning till about 5:00 at night. And we have to just listen to all kinds of investment people, we have to listen to seminars put on by PERAC concerning some of the recent laws, the changes in the laws are constantly changing. I mean, already this year, we've probably gotten, I'm gonna say, at least 20 or 25 memos from PERAC that address different laws, different issues, changes they're making, things of that nature. And we always have to, we happen to have our money invested with PRIT, which is a state organization, which has turned out to be a home run for us. But whoever you have, then you have to have counselors that oversee the investment people, and you have to watch the investments to see what they're doing, see if you want to change investment companies. Therefore, you have to attend all these classes so that when somebody says to you, well, what's a hedge fund, or do you want to put money into forestry, or, you know, what, a million different things. And each one that gets up and speaks has other reasons why theirs is the best reason to invest into their property. So we're busy the entire time that we're away, and that's four or five days out of our life, attending, you know, these conferences to make sure that we're astute, if you will, on what we need to do. We have a large fiduciary responsibility, you know. We have over $43 million here that we're talking about. So it's important for us to pay attention and do a good job.
Any additional questions? Counselor Hayes?
Do you have a copy of the minutes from any of your meetings, so we can see what kind of work you're actually doing in meetings? How long is your average meeting?
Again, it depends on what's going on that particular month, how many people are addressing the board, who's coming in. It can range anywhere from, I don't know, an hour to two hours, three hours, depending if we have a lawyer there or not. They like to talk more than I do. So, and our minutes, all of our minutes are available, they're all kept at our office at 199 North Hampton Street, where the Retirement Board is located. Every meeting we have, everything is documented, minutes kept, and they're on file for, I guess, ever.
And how many people are on the board?
Five. There is, the board makeup is an ex-official person, which is generally defined as a city auditor. There's a Merrill appointment, that can be whoever the mayor chooses. There are two elected persons, which is Mr. Emerson and myself, and there's a fifth member, which is an appointed member by the other four members of the board, which is Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, any additional questions for, I'm sorry, I saw Counselor Smith first.
Oh, no.
Okay.
I just want to be clear on the role of city council in this. We're just going to approve the chapter of the Massachusetts General Law for this. You are gonna set the stipend.
No.
No.
No. You set the stipend, and it was agreed at the, at the sub-finance committee, we were only seeking $3,000. And that's because the law says the minimum that you can pay a board is $3,000. So that's fine. We are not seeking anything higher. And, and as to my knowledge, the city council needs to accept this provision of the law in order for us to go forward and get the $3,000 stipend, which is not paid in a lump sum, it's paid on a monthly basis.
Okay.
And it's not retroactive.
Counselor Smith?
My original question was, what was your rationale for the $3,000? But I want to make sure I'm understanding, you're saying that would be $3,000 for the board as a whole, or for each individual member on the board?
Individual member.
Okay.
And the law does not allow anything between $3,000, so that's why I was...
No, no, it's three, if the chapter's accepted, it's a $3,000 minimum.
Can you tell me how many retirees you oversee?
Yes, and Tina, correct me if I'm wrong, 130...
162.
162.
And it...
But we also deal with all the current employees as well, because the retirement laws impact them. Not the exact same way it does the retirees, depends on what the law is.
I think I saw Counselor Hayes' hand first.
So you had said 18 hours of schooling every three years is what you have to do?
I said 18 credits.
18 credits?
Correct.
For every three years. And then your financial disclosure forms have gotten harder?
They're never worrying. Those have, the continuing education and the financial disclosure forms have come about in the last couple of years. And so there were no financial disclosure forms.
But you said they're very time-consuming, and that's what the stipend would go towards?
Well, yeah, and filling them out, they're probably, I don't know, seven, eight, nine pages long or something, and...
Right.
You have to just kind of trudge through it, and there's, they ask all kinds of different questions, you know, how much money you have, or where it is, do you have investments, what's it invested in? And I think that the purpose of...
Those all seem reasonable.
Yeah, to make sure there's no conflict of interest or something, you know?
Precisely. But you feel like the stipend will cover your time for filling out financial disclosure boards for a board that you sit on?
Yes, that's a great part of it. It's also a big responsibility here, and, you know, we have this fiduciary responsibility kind of thing that's hanging over our head all the time. We have a state agency, PERAC, which oversees all the retirement boards. Plus, we go through audits every two years, and we go through two, and we have to sit down with an actuarial and plan out our structure of our system for the next two years, and assume, project what kind of money we're gonna make, a dozen different things.
Counselor Wayne, did you, did you have your hand up yet?
Yeah, but I'll speak when the motion is put on the table, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments for this gentleman? No, I guess we're all set then, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Cager, would you mind, I have a question, maybe you could answer for me, or... So I know, as Counselor Rist was saying, this is not general fund money.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry. This is not general fund money, but it's... Sorry, I'm sorry, this is not general fund money, but it's taxpayers' money, how exactly does this money, where do we get this money that we're putting into this?
Okay, I'd be happy to answer that, and I think, you know, Melissa would probably, you know, put some finishing touches on it. The, you were mentioning the $2,700,000, that is, comes from PERAC, and that is what we are responsible to pay out of our budget to the retirement, oops, sorry, to the, you know, for the retirement board every year. But the, the retirement board, I think what you're probably looking for, the retirement board is funded, I mean, the retirement is funded by your, our employees, and also by the city. So there are no, the other funds that they, that they would use would be their investments. So those are the three sources of funding. The three sources of funding for our retirement board would be their investments, the, the monies that is given to the city every year out of our budget, you know, that we are, get that from PERAC, and also from our retirees, like what, what all of us pay into the system every, every pay period.
So it's a fair statement that taxpayers' money aren't directly funding these?
Taxpayers, unless they're, well, taxpayers' money, it's part of our budget, so, you know, our overall budget that, you know, it's part of budget funds that we pay every year, you know, that we're required.
But if it's coming from those three sources you just mentioned, none of them were...
One of them is the city.
Oh, okay, I thought it was a city employee.
That 2.7 million.
2.7 million.
Right, that's the, the city's fund, the city's part, the city's responsibility, then the employees' responsibility, and then their investments. That's what they're funded.
And for some, so is it fair to say that the reason why it's not in general fund is because it comes out before, you have to pay it almost, you remove it before it gets to general fund? From my opinion. Never mind. I withdraw the question.
No, I think that's a very good question.
I don't understand the question.
I think that's a very good question.
That's all right, I'm just curious how taxpayers' money fit into this. I'm sorry, any...
I think, I think it's a good question, I think, the question, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, maybe...
I was gonna try to reformulate the question in a way that I think everyone can understand. The, the retirement fund, if I understand this correctly, is made up of the three sources that you said. The money that's in the fund, then we invest it, or the retirement board invests it, and either makes money or loses money, depending on the marketplace and what the investments are in. That in part is your responsibility, along with the firm that you hire to invest those monies. The retirees' contribution, the future retirees...
Exactly, I was just gonna say the...
The current employees, future retiree contributions that are made. And the portion that comes from the taxpayers, the 2.7 million dollars a year, that goes into the fund, so that goes into the, a main pool, and out of that comes the $15,000 to fund the board, is what we're proposing.
Right, there's a natural study that's done, that you've seen, and that's where, you know, it's determined, you know, what the city's share of, you know, is to be paid every year. And you'll notice that in your, you know, when you open your budget, where that comes from.
So it is public funds in part, yes.
All our questions are public.
Counselor Smith?
There was a statement made earlier about how many cities do this versus how many cities don't, and I was just hoping for some more detail on that, if it's, if it's cities in the eastern part of the state versus western, if it's a certain size, what...
I actually have that for you, and I'll try to find it.
I thought there was eight, eight western Massachusetts communities that are in there, and I think it includes Amherst, if I'm not mistaken.
That's all the cities and towns in the state, and that tells you how many have accepted. I just gave it to her. It was handed to us by Mr. Eagan.
So it's less than half?
Over 71 out of...
Seventy-one out of 102 is a lot more than half.
Does that mean that they haven't accepted the statute, but could they be paying a stipend anyway?
No. You can't pay the stipend without...
No, we're not accepting the statute. Just try to keep it in order here, Counselor Rist.
Just to clarify, the stipend that can be paid is to the treasurer of the retirement system and to the auditor of the retirement system, which we currently do, at $1,500. The board members can't receive a stipend unless we accept this law.
Got it.
So the board members are not receiving, and I'm correct on that. No board in the, in the state can receive this stipend unless they, and I wanted to let the council, as Counselor McCoy alluded to, we would have, of course, started at a lower figure than 3,000, just to get us started with this, if we could, but the state in there, I guess they felt that 3,000 was a proper, appropriate number.
Thanks.
So that's why it's at 3,000. And for this counselor, I wanted you to know, the reason I voted in favor of it is because it's, it's not a case of affordability. This is something that's spread out over time, and it is a very minor hit to unfunded liability in the retirement system and to our appropriation. It is whether it's deserved, and the amount of, my feeling was, it was deserved, given the amount of responsibility they have. It's not about how long it takes, how much time. A guy like Mr. Dunham has been doing it for, what, 25 years, however long? He can do the job faster than anybody else, because he knows the law and he's been doing it. So it's not about time, it's about responsibility, and I've always felt that people in this nature should receive compensation when they're given a great deal of responsibility over a multimillion dollar fund. So that's why this counselor voted for it, and I just wanted, I'm hearing things about time and how long it takes them to do things. I've decided that that was not the nature of the request, it's whether it's deserved and whether their responsibilities meet the requirement. That was my metric for voting yes to this, and I just wanted to let the council know that the finance committee voted three to zero in favor of it.
Okay, now, if there's anyone else from the retirement board or the public who would like to address the council concerning this topic, feel free to come to the podium, state your name. Okay, I expect to, you, Counselor Rist?
I guess I'll make a motion, then. There'll be two motions, if I can find them.
I'm sorry, Counselor Hayes?
I'm, I'm a little reticent, because this is a board that meets in Northampton, and do they meet publicly?
On Northampton Street.
So your, your records are on Northampton Street?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you post your meetings, do you have your minutes available, like, on the website, so that the public can, because if we're paying a board, I would like that to be really transparent, so that anybody could see what this board...
They answered that question, and they have done that.
So the, the records are available to the public, are they electronic, or...
They are subject to open meeting law, just like everybody else.
So you, you videotape all of your meetings and everything?
That's not part of the open meeting law requirement. They should.
I'll videotape all of them, yes. And then they are transcribed down into written form, hard copied, and kept on file at the office.
At what office?
199 North Hampton Street, 304th...
Okay, so you guys have your own office?
Yes, we do.
I was gonna make a motion, but if counselors have any other questions for members of the board, we should do that first.
Because once a motion is on, we can't call it for the public, so if you have a question...
You're making a motion on which?
I'm gonna make a motion on first, the, well, on both. I, I, no, I'll make a motion first on the stipend for the board, and then a motion for the treasurer.
I guess I had some questions about understanding the history, obviously, the history was, there was no compensation before for any of...
For the board.
Regular board members.
Right.
Including Mr. Dunham, who's been with us for 20 years, doing considerable responsibility. I'm trying to understand the role of the treasurer and the auditor within this, and the time that is taken, so I, I guess, if we approve the board, then it becomes the, if we approve the stipend for the board, then the board has the full authority at that point to approve stipends for the auditor, is that correct?
Right, and they've agreed to remove the stipend for the auditor that currently exists, so that she would only receive 3,000, which is what she would get as an ex officio member of the board. And the documents we received this evening indicate that that is happening. The treasurer has a great deal of fiduciary responsibility toward this system, she has to maintain it, and that's why she receives a stipend now. And it was agreed by the finance committee and the board that she should be increased to 3,000, as well as the board members. The total increase being $15,000 over the current 3,000.
So I guess I was, I'm gonna ask the treasurer to come up, if, the finance direct, treasurer, finance director?
She's called the treasurer of the retirement system.
I was a retirement assistant.
Finance director of the city.
Just to be able to clarify the role that you hold in terms of, as finance director, treasurer of the city, versus, the role in, on the board is as treasurer to the board? No?
So Chapter 32 requires that...
A little louder, please.
Chapter 32, which is the Mass General Law that creates the retirement system, requires a standalone retirement board, which is what the city of East Hampton has, we have a, you know, we're not a regional board, requires that the treasurer of the municipality be the treasurer of the retirement board. So my role in that is that, so every time they have retirement payments to retirees, I work with Tina to get the banking done for that, just like I would a payroll for the city, getting the tax payment made, doing the direct deposits, processing the checks, and balancing the day-to-day operational account that the retirement board has versus their investment account. And so it's a, and then annually, I work again with Tina to do the tax reporting, which for the retirement system is a 1099, which has to be in balance with what's called a 945 tax report, which is similar to, like, if you did payroll, to do a quarterly withholding tax. We do withholding tax for the retirees. And so that, the, the, the basic responsibility of the treasurer is to help keep the cash flow going and operate the checkbook to make vendor and payroll payments to the, to the retirees and any vendors that the retirement board has.
So I'm trying to understand, so that role that you serve to the board, sounds almost like a role you would serve to the various other departments in the city?
It's considered a...
That have payroll expenses, that have...
It cannot run on the city's budget, it doesn't run in the city's system, it's a separate system, and it's a separate entity. The retirement board is not under the city umbrella, it's a standalone organization with its own tax ID number, and therefore operates in some sort of autonomy from the city, but is closely connected to the city because it is a supportive role to our employees and our retirees. And then therefore, we as a municipality have a responsibility to maintain it, hence the appropriation that we make annually, because it's part of our benefits, but it is a standalone organization.
So the $1,500 is paid to you through, from the retirement board?
Correct.
As a separate?
Correct.
Check, separate?
Yep.
Okay. And you've had that $1,500, as has every other treasurer?
Yes.
Before, not everyone.
I'm not sure when it started, but, yep.
But everyone, but the previous ones, yeah, okay. Very good.
Okay, any additional questions? No, thank you.
Before I make the motion, any other counselors have questions for retirees or administrative personnel? I'll make a motion, I wanted to make this clear, the finance committee was clear in that it would, would pass both motions, and we supported the motion to increase the treasurers to 3,000, along with the board's increase, they were, in our minds, necessary. It would be, well, in any way, we wanted them both to be increased, so that everybody had the same fund. I move that the city council accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 32, Section 26, so as to provide compensation to members of the East Hampton Retirement Board up to the amount of 3,000 per year.
Second.
Motion a second, any additional questions or comments among counselors? I'm not seeing anyone. Mary Ann, could I have a roll call on this, please?
Dan Carey?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Jennifer Hayes?
Abstain.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Joseph McCoy?
Abstain.
Daniel Rist?
Yes.
Tamara Smith?
Yes.
Joy Winnie?
Yes.
So that's seven yeses and two abstentions.
Motion passes.
I make the following motion, I move that the city councils accept provisions of MGL Chapter 32, Section 24H, so as to provide compensation to the treasurer as custodian of the funds of the East Hampton Retirement System, up to the amount of not more than 3,000 per year.
Motion a second, for, for Chapter 32B, Section 24D and a half, any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, one abstention.
Mr. President, I move that the public hearings be closed.
Is there a third one?
No, we don't have to do the third one, that's retirement systems on jurisdiction.
Okay, yes, so I'll, so is there a motion to close public hearings, there's a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, one abstention.
Mr. President, I move that the public hearings be closed.
Is there a third one?
No, we don't have to do the third one, that's retirement systems on jurisdiction.
Okay, yes, so I'll, so is there a motion to close public hearings, there's a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Let me see where we left off, I believe ordinance council did, I think, Mr. President, ordinance did meet on the 27th of January, where we were able to talk to the city health agent around the food truck ordinance, got some questions answered, and right now, we're still fact finding and determining whether such an ordinance would be beneficial to the city, or whether any ordinances relating to that would be beneficial to the city. So that's something that's still in deliberation. We also started to review some of the sign inconsistencies that the city planner had shared with us, and we're planning on taking a look at those at our next meeting, which is the 24th at 6:00 PM. Okay, terrific. That concludes. Okay, property, Counsel Kuzinski?
No report this evening.
Okay, now back to rules and regulations, Counsel Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a couple of things. First, on our topic was electronic agenda discussion. What that means is that we would receive electronically all agendas and supporting documents. The clerk of the council, Barbara, would send us what is called a PDF, we all probably know what they are, to our email addresses. We would have the ability then to store them in our own files and print what we would need. The advantages to this, obviously, we could store things electronically and recall them as we need to, rather than look through paper documents and lose them, I do that a lot. They are easily distributed to the public, and to ourselves, and to anyone, it's all public document, so therefore, that adds to transparency. One of the things we did discuss at the meeting was the fact that we did not want the clerk to have to print some documents and scan others. She seemed perfectly willing to scan the documents, because that's the same as copying them, in a sense, but doing both was an extra burden, and I believe, and the other counselors on the Rules Committee can speak to this, the consensus was, we would do one or the other. The Rules Committee is not prepared to recommend yet, we wanted to let everyone know, if we choose to do this, you would all be responsible for, you could bring your own laptop to the meetings and call up your documents as you need them, or print your own documents, if, like me, you want to write on them or anything. But the documents would still be available to the public, like we leave the agenda out, she would still print those. So we're not prepared to recommend yet, we wanted the counselors to hear where we're at with it. It's gonna be one or the other, and I'd ask the other Rules Committee members to speak to it if they'd like to, but we will bring it back. Unfortunately, I can't tell you when we're gonna have another meeting, because there's some debate as to when that could happen, to finalize our discussion on it. It is the modern age, and this counselor feels that it would be an advantage to me, because I do lose paperwork a lot, but of course, we save trees. On the other hand, it's a lot of documents, there's sometimes we get large packets, so it's something to consider. So we all want you to dwell on that, and maybe come to the next Rules Committee meeting, which may not happen for a while, but when we do make that discussion, if you have anything that you'd like to bring forward as to whether or not you find this difficult for you. It's clear to this counselor that I would not like to make the clerk print some packets and PDF the other packets, that's not fair. So I'd like to, the other counselors want to say anything, or Counsel McCoy, counseling to this or no?
So Counselor, so was it my understanding that you'd like at the next meeting to take
But were you hoping to do-
We could-
An additional council vote after that?
Yes. Well, it has to be, it, it, to me, it has to be a rule, it has to be something the council would have to by majority vote, vote for.
Okay, Counselor Hayes?
You, you had said you were bringing it up at this meeting to get feedback from the other city councilors.
I'm asking, if people want it, or they could bring it to the other counselor, to the Rules Committee, or-
So, yeah, I mean, I obviously think electronic is the way to go, for sure. I mean, I think the end user is the public, not the city councilors. So we have to make it as easy for the public as we can.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
I also am in favor of electronic, um, for the reasons that Counselor Hayes stated, but also additional reasons. Um, knowing that this is all of our part-time jobs, and we have full ta, full-time jobs during the day, not necessarily in East Hampton, um, I don't like having to come at night to a closed-up building by myself in the dark to get my notes, if that's the only time I can. I feel that's a personal safety issue that can easily be handled by making that electronic. So I, I strongly feel that that's an accessibility issue that we need to address as the council. And I also feel that if we look at our, um, resolution to be as diverse as possible, part of that is reaching as wide an, an audience as possible, so I think that as well, having it electronically would reach a wider audience. So my reason, again, i- is slightly different, but I wanted to add that to the discussion.
Counselor Derby?
Uh, I, I would echo those comments. I would say, you know, having 10 years of city council papers, um, in my basement, uh, it is a lot of paper, and I think, you know, to be a more environmentally conscious council, it makes a lot of sense to not have that much paper. And I think it's, it's pragmatic, because, uh, it would save us a lot of money, just on printing and toner and paper, uh, and that makes sense, because that saves taxpayers' money.
Any other questions? Uh, Counselor Carey, is, this is how the school committee receives their agendas, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you like that and found it easy and blah?
Yeah, it was convenient to get it in the email, because, um, like Counselor Smith said, it just came right to you, instead of you having to go to it. Um, as Counselor Rist said, I prefer to have them printed out, so I would get the email and I would print them out and bring a hard copy with me. Um, so it kinda seems to work, for no matter how you like it, you get it both ways.
Yeah, that's, that was only my concern, especially when if you're, if I'm running a meeting and I have a public hearing for public safety from ordinance, you know, I'll be shuffling PDFs and printing out, um, and I, when I go to meetings, I kinda like to have it and, right, but as I said, there's nothing to prevent me from, even though I just print out the cover page, so that I have somebody to write notes on the back of it, would be sensible. But, you know, I'm in a cranky mood tonight, but I, the, the one argument that I do not like is that, um, the, the lack of time to get your minutes, because this has been done this way. We've had five days, not just at night, but during the days, weekends, you have a key of the building. When you run for city council, you should maybe know how people get their meetings, but, so I'm not saying, I mean, there's a lot of good things, but for me, the one that resonates at least with me is that I don't have time to get it.
I just wanna clarify that I never said anything about time. I said it about safety.
Right, but at night, but it made it sound like there's only time you can come here, is that not?
If, if that's the possibility, I'm putting myself at a personal safety risk, which is not the same as time.
No, but-
It's not a time convenience for me, but if, if it's closed and I have to get here after hours, that's a safety issue for me. It's not a time issue.
No, but it's open during the day on the week, I mean, it's, it's not only at night, never mind, so, that was my point. But anyway, any, um, additional questions or comment concerning this Counselor Kuzinski?
Certainly, in term, in terms of having the public have access to documents, we need to get those documents out there in PDFs. There's, that, that's an absolute, in my opinion. In terms of the councilors, I kind of, I'm in favor of each counselor having their own preference. If they want paper, have paper documents. If they wanna have electronic, have electronic. In terms of, I, I'm trying hard to understand the clerk's position, as represented by Counselor Rist, that it would be an extra burden on the clerk. The information is there, you put it in the scanner, you push a button, it either scans, you put it in again and it copies, and, and copied for years, all the time. I know that sometimes the agendas are long, sometimes the documents are long, there can be 20, 30 pages worth of material. I know sometimes the school committee agendas, uh, I see them at home now. My wife gets them, there's up to 75 pages on that. It's quite an expense to go ahead and copy that doc, those documents at your own expense. Uh, I'll remind everyone that the council's currently paying $3,000 a year for all its responsibilities, and there isn't a lot of, you know, it costs a lot of money to print these. But my, I guess my point really is, I would like to see councilors have the option of, of having one or the other, or in fact, both, if that's what they need. I know it helped me to have the material on the retirement board before me in printed form, as I flipped through the pages. Uh, now, I'm not sure I'd be as adept at flipping through on, on a, an electronic device of some sort, so.
Control F, Counselor Rist?
I, I, one of the reasons I didn't wanna bring this forward is the clerk was not gonna be here this evening, so I'd like her to be able to respond to your query. Um, and therefore, perhaps, if I could get the Rules Committee to meet, uh, maybe prior to the next meeting, we could make a decision to bring it forward at that time, and if you both can meet at, say, 5:30 at the next meeting, we'd, yeah.
I'd say, well, I don't know, what, next Thursday or something?
No, no.
Well, before.
Well, before the next meeting, you probably-
I have appointments.
I have appointments.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll find a time when we can meet, uh, but that's the reason I wanted the clerk to be able to respond. Um, I receive all my documents for the CPA, now that I'm on the committee electronically, and I actually liked it, because I just printed the ones that I needed.
Right.
And I filed the others, so there is a lot to be said for that. I don't wanna add, and, and I'm just speaking for myself, I don't wanna add new work to the clerk. I don't think it's necessary. I think she's very happy to do the PDFs, if that is the pleasure of the council. To print them and to scan them is new work, so that's just me speaking for her, so I'd, I'd rather she spoke to it, too.
Counsel Winnie?
I, I don't care either way. Uh, I, I can adapt to either one.
Did we pay the electric?
I do, I do wanna tell the councilors and make it clear to them that there will be paper coming forth, no matter which way we go with it. There's gonna be, there's times when we get maps that are on 11 by 17 pieces of paper, there's times that things come to the council, uh, after the five-day getting the agenda together, uh, just like tonight with the retirement board handing us, um, information, just forthcoming right then and there. Um, so, you know, I have no feelings, one way or the other, as to which way this goes. Um, I only ask that the city councilors respect our city clerk, who, um, you know, does a lot of work for this council and that, and if she feels that it might be a burden to go both ways, then we should give her a little bit of respect on that, and, and we listen to her and to what her feelings are on that.
Okay. Counsel Collins?
Um, I also think that going electronic is absolutely directional in the way we should go. My thought is, is there any opportunity, if we go forth with this, to have a pilot period, so that we can assess the workload of the clerk for a month or two of meetings, reevaluate and then make it permanent or not? Maybe it does become a burden, maybe it doesn't, but we'll never know.
Yeah, that was our idea, to have a trial period.
We actually talked about that.
Okay.
To have a sunset clause that would say that this would have to be renewed after a certain amount of time by the council, just to see.
Then I'm all for that.
So we'll bring it forward at, uh, hopefully, at the next meeting. I'm gonna meet with our councilors to discuss that. The next item up for, uh, Rules Committee was Rule 6F, which is reconsideration. We went back and forth on this and found that it was important to maintain reconsideration, that the language gave a counselor the ability to make an immediate vote, or to announce that they would make the motion at the next meeting. The example was, and where it was almost needed, was when we had our, like, those of us that were on the last council would remember, we were looking at licenses and whether or not we would need to, um, give a certain amount of licenses, and it was a, it was a item up for debate and discussion, and it seemed with, with absences and with abstentions, we may not get a majority, and I, for one, being in favor, was looking to ask for reconsideration because of the absence of councilors. When we debated it, uh, we, we realized that the one thing that could happen is that a single counselor could say, "I'm gonna make a motion to reconsider at the next meeting," and that would delay the action of a positive vote, should that counselor have a negative opinion and want to try and block it, which meant that there would be a two-week period before the next meeting, and that might be, in a time-sensitive matter, a problem. So we added the word "special" meeting, so that the president could call a special meeting, forcing this reconsideration vote, and making sure that a measure that the majority favored could have an opportunity to be passed without the time sensitivity creating, and creating a negative situation, which one counselor could do. And, uh, that, that was something we thought of. We didn't feel there was any other language changes that were necessary, because it was quite clear that reconsideration might be necessary. And that example of the license issue was very pertinent, because that was abstinence, that was abstentions and absences that might've made for a negative vote. You need five votes to pass anything, and that was an important issue. So I thought I would have to do that, but as I recall, Counselor Hagan changed his vote to positive, so we didn't have to do it. So that's where we are, and, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that this minor amendment to 6F happened. Before, does anybody have any questions before?
Any questions for, okay, Counsel Kuzinski?
I just wanted to try to summarize it, because I've read this very carefully many times, thought about it a lot, and I think to summarize, a small number of us could meet and create a quorum and vote not to do something that, or to do something that the majority of the larger body may feel differently. That's what it sounds like Counselor Rist is talking about, the larger body-
Meeting of the council, you can't have a small meeting of the council without the entire council being noted.
Well, they all, they all, the, the entire council can be here, on, only they're not here, because they're away, they're absent. You have a, a meeting of nine people. A majority show up, quorum.
Five.
Five. The five vote, three vote one way, two vote the other way.
So the person either way?
So the person who is, either side could ask for reconsideration.
Correct.
Could ask for reconsideration, uh, and presumably, the larger body would then have an opportunity to weigh in on the subject.
Which is why we're all elected, and that's why we need it. That's exactly why we need it.
Right. I'm in agreement with you. I just wanted to try to resummarize it.
I, I, no, I'm, I'm in agreement with this as well. Um, I'm just curious, because I, I feel like, Dan, you probably have a better grasp of Robert's rules than I do, but I, I imagine, if I wanted to delay a vote, could I make a motion to table that item?
If you wanted to delay a vote, the charter, let, let's be clear, Robert's rules only applies if no other rule of the council, or the state, or the charter is not in place. The charter allows for any counselor with a second, which is new, we added that, to delay a vote-
Okay.
-to the next meeting. And there's other language in there, in which, uh, a number of councilors would have to do, delay the vote further.
Okay.
So that is possible right now in the charter. So if there's an appropriation in front of us and we wanna, and, and this happened once, it happened when we were about to lose our term, and one counselor delayed a vote because he didn't like it, and knew that the next meeting was in a new term with new councilors, so the president called a special meeting, so we could pass the option before the term. That's history. Um, so the charter does allow that right now. And again, it's not Robert's rules, because if we have a charter or a rule ourselves, this takes precedence over Robert's rules. Robert's rules is the bottom of the pile.
And, and that being said, and that's what I was curious about. However, with, with this, we could, uh, have a motion for reconsideration on the tabling and, and vote on that at a special meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, you can reconsider any measure.
Okay.
You don't wanna get that complicated.
I just, you know, it's fun to think about.
And, and remember this, the rules of the council, we could vote to suspend the rules at any time by a majority vote. The rules say, for instance, that we can't revote on a measure within six months of the time that it was voted on and it was decided one way or the other. But the council at one point did vote to suspend those rules, so we could take it up again.
Yep.
So our rules are ours, and we, as a majority, can change them at any time by suspending them. Reconsideration allows one counselor to say, "Wait a minute, we didn't have enough people here." Any other questions?
Thank you for the question. Getting sick of talking. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the amendment to Rule 6F.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the rewritten Rule 6F. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
The last item that I want to speak to this evening.
So, so we could vote to reconsider?
That's right. The last thing that the Rules Committee respectfully asks all subcommittee chairs to submit to the Rules Committee, uh, a point-by-point mission statement, or, uh, the, what was I gonna say? Reason for your existence. If you look at the Rule Committee, the Rules Committee actually has a point-by-point, the role of the Rules Committee in the current, current rules. It was very, uh, specific. That's an example of what the Rule, what our committee would like every chair to submit. I believe there was something stated that the Property Committee already had something like that, it was in the minute someplace, just never got to the rules. We would put it in the rules that would help new chairs, new councilors know what each committee is supposed to do. So the role of your committee, we're just asking you to submit those, and once you get them, we'll put them into the rules as specifics.
I believe the idea was to put on the website as well, Counselor Hayes, so the public knows exactly what these subcommittees' responsibilities would be.
Yep, and the request has also been made to boards and committees that are-
Or that would, yeah.
Additional boards and committees.
The mayor's acting on that, I would say. That concludes my report.
Okay. Um, I think we're down to, oh, this is, the boardwalk is still, sort of, I shouldn't say sorry to say, but we're still working on it, still communicating with the mayor as well as taking new names, uh, people who might be interested in serving on it. Um, we do have, uh, a warrant for our election coming up, our primary election, so in a form of a motion, I would like the subcommittee to accept the, um, the notice for the presidential primary on March 1st, 2016.
Which subcommittee?
This is just, the whole council is just doing it now.
You have to say council.
Oh, did I say subcommittee?
Yes, it is.
Okay, sorry, subcommittee, to accept this, uh, notification for the March 1st primary. Uh, as a reminder, again, the polling for precincts 1, 2, and 5 will be White Brook Middle School, 3 and 4 will be East Hampton High School. Again, the primary is Tuesday, March 1st, 2016, so, um-
I'll make the motion that we accept the, uh-